This meeting to order. It is Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty five at six P M. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner South.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with our roll call, starting on my left here.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Barbie De Soto, no conflicts.
Ann Allen, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. Now, before we begin, I'd like to read a statement on decorum. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions. Unless otherwise invited by the chair, please wait to speak until called on. When speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a conversation, please step out of the the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive during the hearing. So with that, we'll go ahead and begin with our first item. Development Services requests a general plan text amendment to Appendix B. Moderate income housing supply and strategies to include in new strategies contained in U C A. Ten nine A four oh three two B paragraph three. Si- uh, and this is a citywide application, and I believe Melissa McNally will be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, so we're asking for an amendment just to the general plan, the moderate income housing. Um, appendix specifically the strategies um in the implementation table. Just to give you a little bit of history, a few years ago, the state required that all cities have this the moderate income housing plan with actionable items from um a list of several strategies. So we adopted some of the time and we decided that those need some updating. There are some that we just need to update um what we're doing to accomplish those goals and others. Um, are no longer, we're no longer working on. Anyway, just a general update. So um. Just to go through really quick, um, uh, we've updated language on um goals A and B. Uh, just to include, um, sorry, strategies A and B to include new goals. Um, and then um, strategy D uh will be updating. At a later date, um, so we just took some of the language out of that one. And then strategy I um to amend land use regulations to allow for a single room occupancy. Uh, that's no longer something that we're working on, so we're removing that one. Um, again, uh, strategy O on the the home program, we have like actionable um goals to work towards that we've included in that. And then the additions that we made um are for um strategy M for the uh participation in a community land trust. Uh, and also, as we're getting into these new strategies, uh, we've decided on these new ones because these are things that we've already been working towards. So it's kind of an easy win to just include things that we're already working on. And get credit for them. So the community land trust, that's something that we're already working on. And that kind of goes along with and partner with the um. Oh, let's see, sorry, um, implement mortgage assistance and um and demonstrate utilization of a moderate income housing. So that's strategies M, N, and P. So those kind of all go together. So the redevelopment agency has a a required set aside with the tax increment financing that that we get. And that set aside is supposed to go for uh moderate income and affordable housing. So we are working with um Sarah Van Cleve at uh Provo City Housing Authority. I think, and Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is her, it's the um. I wrote it down somewhere. There, there we go. Utah Regional Housing, is that the organization she's okay? So the community land trust will be under Utah Housing. Utah Regional Housing, apologies. Uh, so we're already working on those um with a set aside and creating a down payment assistance for specifically for um first responders at Provo City. And then extending it out to uh other public servants within Provo City, like for the school district and things like that. Um, and then the last one, uh, strategy X is to create housing and transit reinvestment zone, which is something that we will be looking at implementing after the station area plans are adopted. Uh, and also just to, just as a reminder, in um, as I've stated in the staff report, we are obligated because of the size of our city and because we have a light rail. Um, we're obligated to have at least five strategies in order to get get funding from the state for other areas. Um, if we have more than five strategies that we're actively working on, we get priority funding. So that's good for our public works. It helps fund our streets and other infrastructure um projects. So that's what I have for you today. If you have any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I read in here that there, I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I read in here that there was a percentage that was needed, like we needed to hit certain percentages of housing of this housing in order to qualify for the money from the state, might, right?
For the, for the um, the H T R Z, for the X, yes.
How far off are we currently? Like, you're saying you need to add more moderate income housing. So how much more do we need to go?
Can, so can you tell me specifically which one?
I don't know. No, I'm looking at. I read this and, uh, which one? Yeah, I read this and then wrote down the question and I didn't refer to what I. As I was reading, it says we require municipalities to maintain your, wait a minute. Isn't there something in here that says we're trying to get more moderate housing? Is that true?
Well, that's what the moderate income housing strategy is for. We're required to actively.
So what I'm asking is, where are we now and where do we want to be?
It's, as far as moderate income, I'm not sure. It's, there's no like bullseye goal that, hey, you've reached all you can reach. The state is requiring us to continue to work year after year on this. And we have to report our progress and actionable items we have done throughout the year to work toward those goals of providing more moderate income housing.
But we don't have a goal for how much housing we're providing.
No.
This seems like a crazy goal to me. Like, we have a goal to do more, but we don't know what more is.
Yeah, and and it, this is something that that all cities of certain sizes are required to do.
Well, you see what I mean? Like, one more house is more.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this made me think of something that I, I was thinking, this is maybe an aside. It's not an issue or anything, but I was wondering if we could have like a report on this after a year and see what has actually been done and what's in the works coming up, just to like see, like, so there's some sort of um. Yeah, so we can see and what's, what's the fruit of this.
Yeah, understanding later, yeah. Cause you're asking to have the zones totally opened up, right? We're gonna change the general plan that everybody has.
We're changing the zoning where it makes sense. If you look at the, at the goals, um, I've stated that we'll change zoning where it makes sense. So for instance, the station area plans, there will be some zone change changes in those areas where it makes sense to include more density, which provides more affordable housing, right?
Well, where it makes sense, but does that make sense on agricultural land? Does it, you know what I mean? That's pretty, that's part blanche, yeah.
All of these strategies, every time these things come up, they'll, they're coming before you. Every time there's a zone change, that's, it's coming before you, before it's changed.
Okay, so this is.
This isn't saying we're gonna do whatever we want. This is saying this, this is, these are things we're going to do, we're going to implement. And these are all things that you all will vote on.
So they're just broad goals, broad strategies, that other things can be based on.
So this is saying, give us permission to ask you permission?
This is telling the state, this is how we're going to meet this goal.
It's meeting a state requirement to set goals and say, this is what we plan to do. So.
Well, it's also adjusting the general plan so that when future things come forward, we're looking at those with respect to this general plan and these additional strategies.
I don't know. There's a lot of work been put into the general plan. That's why I was, I was like, what are we doing exactly?
It's just the implementation table.
Yeah.
That's the only, that's the only part of the general plan that's being amended, and it's in a, a, the appendix. The moderate income housing, it is state required. And it's one of the things we're already working on. There are already zone changes happening where it makes sense. And they're all changes that come before you as the planning commission that you vote on and send on to city council for voting.
Lisa?
Just in response to that, the way I see it is it's just saying our goal is we want more mo- moderate income housing. So as we hear things, we remember that that's a goal, like, doesn't need to be a percentage or a benchmark or anything. It's just continuously a goal.
Right.
Um, my questions for you were, um, just to clarify, there's a lot of letters of the alphabet that are missing. So the ones that are missing are things you're not changing?
Right, and the, and maybe there's strategies that we're not implementing.
Okay.
So they're all in the state code. So all of these um are taken straight from the state code that's referenced at the beginning of the staff.
So they have kind of a menu of ideas and you pick and choose.
And you have to, you have to pick from their menu.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, on E, page five of the staff report, there's a a benchmark that says Housing Committee will review off-street parking requirements for A D U's by the end of twenty twenty three. Is that something that's supposed to be taken out?
That's supposed to be taken off because that's not, there's no um housing committee right now, so.
I just, I noticed that that was one that had already passed, and I wondered if it had been achieved or if it was getting hashed out or whatever, so.
Yeah.
That's going out, okay.
Yeah, it is. Sorry about that.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, here we are. We will now open the hearing to public comments. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If we have questions, we will invite you to come back to the microphone uh to ask them. This time is for comments only. If you have questions about an item, please speak with staff privately. We have anyone here to speak on this item this evening. Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. What are our thoughts?
I have some thoughts.
Okay.
Um, I think it's great that staff stays on top of stuff like this. I, I always think it's sad when there's funding that's available and we don't, somebody doesn't get it just because they weren't paying attention. So I appreciate that they are adding additional strategies. So we're well in excess of the requirement to get the funding and that will keep us at the front door of the opportunity. So I think it's great. I don't have a problem with it. If it was the first time that this was being done, maybe we would be doing summer finding, but knowing that we're basically checking boxes from a a state list and saying, we'll do that, we'll work on that. Just a statement of what we're, we're gonna take on, so. I'm comfortable making a motion to move on whenever discussion's over.
Awesome. Andrew?
I also love the fact that we're going in and identifying things that we're already doing and adding them to the list. I mean, again, to that same point, let's get credit for the things that are, that our staff are already doing really well at, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think it just, it is sometimes hard. It's just formalizing those things we're already doing. We're already there on a lot of these. In fact, I would put it out to end that like we're already gonna fulfill this one with the stationary plans today, so that's really good.
Maybe.
And I like, well, we hope, we hope, or at least it will be, it'll be getting there. But um, yeah, and I, I like these choices, the amended land use regulations to allow G, let's say G H um, M, N, P, and X, I think are all really good. Um, things that we've been talking about a ton and that always come up, so I think it'll be helpful.
So, yeah.
I'm just like, oh, there hasn't been a neighborhood meeting about this and we're changing. Are we changing the general plan? And so like, no, we're just talking about maybe someday we'll change the general plan.
I see this as when the engineering department comes to us and says we've gone through our code and updated everything so that it's in line with what we're currently working on and changing the timetable and taking things out that we've already finished and bumping everything forward down the line. That's what I see this as. It's just a text amendment to bring things up to date to more accurately reflect what's happening in the city.
And it's like a priority list of, of how we think Provo specifically can can improve the, the moderate housing issue, which is something that is in the general plan.
Hmm, just more specifics.
Okay, the only reason, the only reason I kept halting on this, cause I was like, huh, I know there's some stuff going into Salt Lake and I was reading about how in Salt Lake, they have gotten rid of zoning so that they can create more high-density housing in some of the neighborhoods. So like these old neighborhoods like Harvard and, you know, the, those streets, like you can knock down a house now and put in like a sixplex. And I thought, that's nuts. And then they're trying to spread that statewide, and I'm like, is that what I'm looking at right here? Like, is this the beginning of that? Because I know that
No.
the governor, the Governor Cox was saying we need to be doing this around the state. And I know that there's been pressure to have it happen in Provo, and that's why I'm like, hold up. I just wanna make sure that we're not like abolishing, opening up the door to abolish the general plan that, I mean, so many people have worked on that, and that's why I was like, just wanna make sure about what I'm voting on right now.
It's worth noting, just, um, I think that I was working at the Sully Tribune like in twenty, no, two thousand eight. And there was this big controversy because these houses were getting, I think somebody bought two lots next to each other in the Yale neighborhood and knocked them down and made it like a McMansion. And that was like, so it's already been going on.
But that, but that's still a single-family residence, so I'm talking about.
It's still changing the character of the neighborhood.
True, so.
True.
And I'm just like, well, we have agricultural lands that we're worried about, you know what I mean?
Yeah, to me, it's worse to take a small traditional neighborhood and turn it into something that's not sustainable and that is, you know, the, but.
But that, I, but as far as tonight goes, that's when I was just making sure, like.
Right. In fact, when I read through it, there was nothing new. Everything in here that it says we're doing, we are doing, and we've talked about them, and there have been neighborhood meetings and there have been um, public comments on it.
Can we ask staff if that's all true? Is that, are we on the right track here?
Getting thumbs up.
Okay.
Um, I do have one question for Bill real quick. So Lisa found this paragraph that should have been stricken. Do we need to address that in our motion? Um. That we approve as long as this happens, kind of thing?
Yeah, that's fine with the suggestion that that be stricken. That's just fine.
Excellent. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Would you like me to do it?
Please do.
All right, I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of this general plan text amendment to the city council. The item number one, Development Services requests a general plan text amendment to Appendix B. Moderate income housing supply and strategies to include new strategies contained in U C A ten nine A four oh three two B three. Um, and then with the addition of the paragraph about the housing committee in goal E being stricken from that document.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll start voting at my left.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No.
And I'll say aye. So the motion passes four to one. Okay, so the next few items we're going to read in together um, as they are all related, but we will do separate motions and votes on each one. So item two, Development Services requests the adoption of the twenty-two thirty North Station Area Plan. Um, item three, Development Services requests the adoption of the University Avenue Station Area Plan. Item four, Development Services requests the adoption of the Joaquin Station Area Plan. And item five, Development Services requests the adoption of the Front Runner and four hundred South Station Area Plan. And Hannah Saz will present that to us.
Well, just a note for you and for any members of the public who are interested. All the plans are now available online. If you go to provo.gov slash planning, they're right there in the station area tab dropdown. And we'll be making sure we have the updated versions there. All right, just a quick intro because I know you've heard this before, but just in public, I think there aren't many tonight. Seven station areas we have to plan for, we're combining those into four plans because of some overlap. This has been a long process. We've been supported by MAG, U T A. We got some funding for some consultants. Somus, Wall Consulting Group, Lewis Robertson in Burningham, um, have done incredible work on all of this. That's all been aggregated with a robust public survey that got almost seven hundred responses. We've had dozens of stakeholders participate in one-on-one and group stakeholders. Um, visions for these areas were more or less aligned, we found. So they agreed and we, we put these in the plans. Next steps, these plans will not be returning to you again. This will be the last time. Because once they go to you, they'll go to the council who will approve them as to form, which just means we're, we're done making changes. This is the version that we're submitting. That version has to be reviewed by the S A P board, which is the mayors of all of the Utah County cities that have to do these stationary plans, as well as MAG and U T A. We'll get their verdict on the seventeenth at the hearing. Then it will come back to the council for adoption. At that point, we can't make any changes without it going back through the approval process. So your recommendation on this approval as to form is functionally the end of the road for our city process here. And then at the end of the year, we'll begin the resum, so you'll see us again for those. All right, we'll jump right in with the twenty-two thirty north vision and goals. Here, it's also outlined in your staff report, so I won't spend much time here. Just focusing on your density on our occupied units, you can see, highlighted some key phrases to help these go faster. And then redevelopment and transportation environment, which were combined because the best environmental goals we can reach with this area are uh, emissions reductions with multi-modal, multimodal shifts. Um, these are also the basic structures of the chapters as you're looking through with an implementation table at the end and an introduction at the beginning, very standard. These are the cores of the documents, the future land use map. And the redevelopment chapters just go into detail on what this should look like, what we encourage developers to do, tools that are available to them, laying it all out in one place for them. And then future transportation, solid lines or existing transportation dotted are current. Any questions about twenty-two thirty north before we move on? Oh, I should note with this future land use map, we are required, as I've said before, I just wanna make this very clear. We are required by the end of the year to make sure our zones that are on the ground at the end of the year are in alignment with our future land use map. That we've identified the areas where they might be misaligned. Those are in the implementation table. There's a map highlighting in yellow boxes everywhere to be rezoned. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before you move on to the next one, I did have one thing I wanted to ask about um this future land use map.
Of course.
Um, where are UCAS and the hair school is in orange there that shows it's gonna be stacked three to fours?
Hmm.
Um, I, I feel like having schools close to the transit stations is a very compatible use with with the transit, with a transit plan. And so I'm wondering why you guys decided to recommend stacked housing instead of having the schools there. I think that's a fantastic use to have in close proximity.
Yeah, this is what we talked about in the work meeting, so it's good that we're bringing it up here so it can come up in this meeting as well. Uh, these schools are in appropriate use and they are well trafficked as students going, or the U V X station is well trafficked by students going to and from those schools. And it's good that they have these services close to their schools as well, accessible restaurants, things like that. Should they ever redevelop? Two to three units stacked housing, we think is probably about the appropriate land use. That would be M D R roughly in the zones. No one is making the move right now. They would be a grandfather non-conforming use. We have clear language there in the plan that we can cite to current property owners. No one is making the move right now. They would be a grandfathered non-conforming use. We have clear language there in the plan that we can cite to current property owners. We don't want any of this to be perceived as forcing current owners out, but we do need to show the state what our future plans are as these businesses turn over. In some cases, the current business there is ongoing, you know, even if it becomes another use, it's, it's the appropriate use, it's appropriately commercial. In this area, the school's appropriate. If it's ever not a school, housing might be the most appropriate.
Is there some sort of a quota for housing that you felt like you needed to meet in each area that pushes you to say, we want this to be housing if it's not what it is right now?
No percentage, but housing availability and affordability were specific goals we were given by the state. We got to decide how we meant those.
I just think, I, I just always worry that even though it can be grandfathered in that if we start rezoning properties, saying this is what's ideal, or this is what our goal is. I, I don't wanna push something out that's actually in a really good place. And so I just would like that concern to be noted. It's not enough to say I'm not gonna approve the plan, but I really do worry that this is a great use for that location and I would hate to send the message that we don't value it.
You're right. And some of our transportation connections would hopefully provide better safety around that school. So we, we are planning on the, for those students.
Okay, thanks.
Um, just another question on here and it comes up with all of them. When I was reading, I was trying to figure out what the numbers one, two, three are. And it says C description and plan, and I could not find it.
It is on the previous page. Um, we don't have the plans pulled up. But I have a copy of twenty-two thirty north right here. In every case with the future land use map, it is the previous page that is numbered. Let me see.
And the staff reports.
It's the one that is titled future transportation recommendations. Yours doesn't have a bunch of my lovely purple.
We don't have that in our staff report.
Yeah.
No, because they are
Cause we already had.
To attach the staff report. They were emailed to you directly.
Got it. It's in the separate ones. I should have gone and looked at those.
Can you, is it something succinct enough that you could say these are the one, two, threes for each plan?
In this case, one at University Parkway and five fifty west is enhanced visual designs for crosswalks to the UVX station. Think like what we have downtown where you have the black brick wrap on top. For number two, that is the Carterville Access Trail, heading up through there, formalizing that. And three, five fifty west. It, it currently should have sherros is what's in the transportation master plan, but staff in public works and here in planning have concerns about that. The road is too high speed and too high traffic for sherros to be appropriate. And we don't have the room for buffered bike lanes. But this could be uh, an appropriate stretch for a mixed use trail off on the side as it redevelops to do a wider sidewalk stretch to connect up to the station. And then improve the stretch along twenty-two thirty north that would connect up with the Prova River Trail. And with, you can see the solid pink sherro there where the road narrows.
So three on, on this plan is essentially saying, let's reconsider this idea of having safe
Yeah. Is a plan for sherros on this road, but that that might not be the most appropriate and suggesting alternatives.
Great, thank you.
You can move, as far as I'm concerned, you can move on to the next one.
I have a question, follow-up question for that.
We'll, we'll this the end of twenty-two thirty north. Uh, any questions you'd like on this plan?
This is on five fifty west you're talking about? The, it's too high speed for sherros? Cause, okay.
Uh, it's, it's a combination of speed and traffic.
Okay.
Where the
Cause it's thirty.
Yes.
And it goes down to twenty-five about halfway, almost a little past that, um, where that roundabout goes into the
Legally, yes, but the road is a little bit wide. It's, uh, oh, if you scroll down, actually, there's a shot along five fifty west right there. It is a really wide road connecting two busier roads. A lot of people take it as a, as
I know, I use it all the time and I get tailgated. Yeah, so this is something that I, okay, I'll comment about it after.
No, you're fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
We also did a few years ago, ha- or several years ago, have fatality in this area. So we wanna make sure we're being especially sensitive to any designs in this area. Because this is a route that students use because it connects student housing. There are a lot of bikes in this area. We wanna make sure we're putting them in a safe environment. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I have comments about that, but
I would love to hear them. Any other comments on twenty-two thirty?
Let's go to the next station.
All right, next station. Thank you. All right, jumping to University Avenue. We're skipping over Joaquin just in the order of how we ended up fin- finalizing the plans. University Avenue is what else? Um, is this station area here? Very similar goals, adding the focus on historic neighborhoods, though. So again, our future land use with our future transportation, same setup. We estimate that with these rezones, it will add, and I understand this is an impossibly large range, but it's just looking at our zoning minimum and maximum densities. Somewhere between around one thousand one hundred and around seven thousand two hundred units were this adopted. Again, very much depending on how fully developers choose to build that out.
Can you repeat that number, please?
Yes, uh, it's in your staff reports if you'd like. Uh, second to last paragraph on page three for University Avenue. One thousand one hundred seventy-four to seven thousand two hundred eighty-two. These are in the plans, in some tables and in the staff reports as well. Just wanna make sure I'm calling these out. We have estimates for twenty-two thirty, but it's a lot more difficult because our mixed use is a huge part of that zone and it doesn't have a requirement in density. It's, it's captured a percentage of area. So it's a tougher to provide that not, uh, estimate for that one. There are, for reference, roughly eight thousand residents here now, um, probably a little lower than that because of the station area overlap. It doesn't take those into consideration. It's probably closer about seven thousand. And then adding about one thousand to eight thousand, depending on developed density.
What are the one, two, three on this one?
One, two, three on this one. I won't be able to answer these on the Joaquin plan without pulling up the plan, but I can answer the others right here. Um, sure, yeah, it's page fifty-eight in the University Avenue plan. Number one, it's six hundred north and University Avenue. Uh, actually, all three of these are enhanced visual design crosswalks to the UVX station. At three hundred north and University Avenue, number two, that's also adding curb extensions on the side streets.
Great.
I have a question.
Yeah, Lisa?
Um, on all of these, I noticed that the orange dot is improved bus shelter. Is that every orange dot is the same recommendations or is each one have its own little nuanced plan?
Those are all improved bus shelters, which are done based on ridership. As ridership increases, bus shelters are upgraded.
So it's more of a goal to improve them according to some metric, not like there's a page saying this is what we want it to look like.
No, um, it's appropriate for ridership. We're just trying to make it really easy for UTA to identify the areas where we feel like there's need.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna follow up with that. Uh, are the bus shelters the thing UTA does or does the city do it?
Yeah, so these ones are areas where there's just a paved area and a pole as opposed to something with seating or a shelter. And if you've ever taken the bus at five in the morning in January, those shelters make a difference.
What's an enhanced curb? You just said that.
Oh, uh, a curb extension. So like a bulbout where the curb narrows at the intersection and then widens again on the road to allow for cars. But pedestrians cross at a narrower point. It also forces cars driving through to visually narrow their field.
Now, I noticed in this particular one, there's a lot of commercial full mixed use. Does that require a mixture of stores and housing in every single building along there? Or is there some flexibility there?
There's some flexibility in our code. The bottom level has to be developed for retail to be able to come in. Uh, we allow for some market flexibility and how it's actually implemented. And most of this is appropriate with our downtown zone anyway.
Right, it's just, that would be a lot of commercial, right? And I don't know if it could sustain that. I'd hate to slow development in the area because of that requirement. But if it just has to be kind of possible commercial, like um, I, I guess it's ceiling heights, things like that. That's totally fine with me.
This rezone map is actually much lighter than the others because so much of it is our downtown area. Some parcel on the east, but that's about it. It's pretty scattered.
Great. Any other questions on this area?
I had a question. It's more general about the mixed use. So mixed use, just to remind myself, it can be commercial, residential and offices?
Yes, so full mixed use can be any of those. Commercial full mixed use tends to be a bit more commercial with residential. And in this, we've separated out it's not shown on this plan, but it is on twenty-two north and some others, a commercial, or sorry, an employment mixed use. That is a little bit more intended to be a restaurant or something on the bottom with offices on top. There's some areas where we thought that was a little bit more appropriate, especially as we're getting over into like the Cotton Tree Plaza area around twenty-two thirty north. But I think in implementation, we can be pretty flexible on how those mixed uses actually go on the ground. Any other University Avenue questions? Moving on to Joaquin, thank you. This is the one station that does not have a goal for inclu- increasing homeownership in the area simply because this area is so close to campus. It is entirely student housing within the bubble. The other goals are very similar, though. With preserving historic districts, we want to make sure that some of the, uh, single family homes in that area south of five hundred are preserved. We do not have jurisdiction to plan for the area north of BYU campus. So we're just showing what it is currently. Anything on campus is out of our, our jurisdiction. The land use map and transportation map, very few changes in the transportation map because this area is already pretty built out with transportation. And there's more just off the area. We're starting work on the eighth east um, bike route today. Actually, I think this afternoon is when it was getting started. So good parallel routes. The dotted line there, mid lot crossing, we've talked about before. See, this will do the light thing right there. Um, as developers are redeveloping these parcels that are connecting to the library, this would give a good off-road path to connect some of our highest density housing in the entire city with the library as well as the UVX route, keeping more bikes and pedestrians off the road. But also giving safer creation access. Any questions on Joaquin?
I'm guessing the one, two, three are also crosswalk improvements.
Yes, I believe two and three might have the RFB, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Yeah.
But they are all just crosswalk improvements.
Yeah, I think three is almost finished.
Yeah, they're working on it right now.
Right now.
Yes, there are some that we included in the plan that, again, we may as well get credit for.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Lisa?
Um, so for all three, all of these station areas, are we, when we say our vision for this is five to six or four, three to four stacked, are we inadvertently diminishing development by requiring them to build so big? Like, what if somebody came in, um, between seven hundred and six hundred and they wanted to build a three to four story one because they didn't wanna put an elevator in and um, this plan says we want it to be five plus. What happens then?
The standard they'll be held to is not the number of stories in this plan. It will be the actual zone that's on the ground. We just have to make sure that whatever zone is on the ground is compatible with this. In this case, the three to four was, I think, MDR and five plus was, um, HDR, high density residential. So they will have to meet the minimum density residential requirements or ask for a rezone. But those standards are pretty lenient.
Okay.
There, there's a lot of flexibility.
I just thought, you know, I can see that having that opposed to a duplex is an improvement in the density and using the land better, but we don't wanna be picking fights over thirty versus forty.
Yeah, the only reason we decided on this map to go with the number of stories rather than the actual zone is to give a rough sense of massing and scale. We found as we were talking to the public, they had no idea what those different zones meant. But they understood this. And same with the state. They're looking at dozens of different cities. So this gives a sense of what those zones are trying to accomplish. But on our backend, as we're actually implementing them, it will meet a zone level.
So we're basically saying we're okay with giant buildings right here.
Yep.
And if you don't wanna build a giant building, you probably can still build it, but we're okay with it.
We'll give you a good range in the zoning code that you can build to.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a question about, I think we talked a little bit about this. Um, because you've been working on this a lot for a long time. So, um, the, it goes, the full, commercial full mixed use to stacked housing five S plus, then stacked three to fours, multiplex, then single family. Is, I'm wondering why the commercial is so close to campus? Is that to push like, all the density that way as well? So it doesn't come down, is that kind of the plan?
It does help with that gradual slope of density that is planned best practice. But that also means that these restaurants are more accessible for students, faculty, visitors to campus. It's right there adjacent to campus, which gives it more utilization. The only real business still open in this area is some mixed views. You can see in that top northeast corner with Slap Pizza and the, the longer that there. So campus adjacent commercial made a little bit more sense. Also, putting it on seven hundred north, as we talked about in our, our work meeting, met with a lot of pushback from a lot of the different stakeholders because seven hundred north is so difficult to navigate with cars because each side is one way and there's the big bus median down the middle. It's almost impossible to turn at most of the intersections. So it's not really commercial friendly.
Can we, can we amend these plans? Like if the whispered idea of moving the UVX to eight hundred instead of seven hundred were ever to come to fruition? We could then say we want commercial on seven hundred and housing on sev- on eight hundred or?
Yeah, I think if things were to shift to such a degree, we technically, actually, there is a provision that if a new station area is opening, a city has to have a station area plan before it can come in now. So we would have to redo this plan because we would have a new eight hundred north.
It would conflict with each other, okay.
So we would have to do a new plan for that area. Yeah.
Cause, yeah, uh, but I was thinking was, I do think that, I agree that, um, really navigating anywhere in this right next to campus area is really hard between seven hundred because you can't turn a lot of places. It almost would make sense, m- more sense, I feel, just to consider this, but, um, maybe for later, but the, the commercial would go south of seven hundred because it's a lot easier to walk to one or two blocks for people who have to just cross that on, it's easier to cross on foot, basically, is what I'm trying to say. Um, and I would encourage that, you know what I'm saying? So just something to think about because I feel like uh, I see the being adjacent, it's still really far from most of campus, though, in practical terms. And, um, it feels long. So, yeah, I just wonder if that's how that'll do in the in the real thing. I wonder if maybe centering it more like south of seven hundred and going out this way instead of away from campus would be better, but just a thought.
Yeah, if that's, gets a majority vote, then you're welcome to recommend approval with conditions to council and add conditions.
Hey, any other questions on this plan? Okay, I think we have one more, right?
Okay, the last one. Front runner and four hundred south. Four hundred south is entirely eclipsed by front runner, but we still have to include it in the plans. This is the largest and most complicated of the station areas. The land use goals are fairly simple because all of this is redevelopment. All of our changing land use is all redevelopment. So all of our goals get shifted there. Still an emphasis on affordability and green space, preserving historic districts. We propose bringing the downtown design standards along front runner and University Avenue. There's a map in the plan that I did not include here. I didn't have time this afternoon. But bringing the downtown design standards all the way down to the northern edge of the mall between front runner and University Avenue to continue creating a sense of place, especially as that station area or the station itself redevelops when we're no longer the southern terminus. We won't need all the collector parking. UTA has plans to redevelop that station, put in some mixed use as well as a parking garage. And we would love to see the downtown aesthetic carried down. That's something we heard from several people in this area. Um, also alternatives for a future city park. As population increases in this area more than any other station, we will probably need an additional park to service it. We don't have an exact location yet and don't want to pin parks down to a specific parcel because we don't know how things are going to shift yet. But it is a goal. It is on their radar. It will be in the next Parks master plan to evaluate these areas for parks. And Parks is on board with this, by the way. There is one change from the draft document that you were given that we received just over the weekend from UTA. As they are looking at designing the station area, they liked the map that we had, but wanted to be able to move things around and restrategize as needed. We all, if the city, know that there's a degree of flexibility in these plans. If you come with a really good idea, you're applying for a rezone or for a project permit that's not exactly in our plans, then we'll work with you to amend those plans. If it meets our need and fits within current market constraints, we'll work with you. They just needed that language explicitly in the plan to be able to show their board to feel comfortable with it. So we added this paragraph stating the general philosophy. If it doesn't commit us to anything we don't already do, we'll work with you based on need. And again, the maps. Any questions?
Can you tell us what the yellow one, two, threes are?
Uh, yes, these are the same across all the plans. Single families are roughly our, our zone. Uh, stacked one to two stories is roughly our BLDR.
No, no, the yellow dots.
Oh, these one, two, threes. I apologize. Most people have questions about the land use.
I have some there too, but I'll start with I have some there too, but I'll start with the easy question.
Oh, you've already got it.
There you go.
Yes, they are um at the four hundred south station, that's the number one right there. Uh, enhanced visual design for the crosswalk and adding a light to the southeast corner, we realized there's not a light and there is traffic that comes pretty high speed to and from the bridge over the tracks, so a light and improved crosswalk should help. At six hundred south and nine hundred west, if you want to go back to the map, or that's
ninety west.
Ninety west, sorry, repeating them. Um, that's roughly on um a little over the other side of the tracks.
I'm assuming that's where the pedestrian crossing is to the bridge.
Yeah, it's, it's right at the pedestrian crossing, I'm having a difficult time describing it, but that's a good suggestion. Um, just those rectangular rapid flashing beacons and signing as people are crossing the street on six hundred to access that pedestrian bridge. And then the third one is on Freedom Boulevard, just north of the tracks, we find that's a common crossing spot. So we'll improve lighting and crosswalk designation there.
Great. Okay, questions about this plan, Lisa?
Okay, I saw on the future active transportation map here, just to the left of the two yellow dot. Um, my question is, why doesn't the bike lane continue all the way to Freedom Boulevard in there? Why does it stop at the crossing? Is that a mistake or is that what someone wants to have happen?
Uh, that is where the pedestrian crossing is, you mean as it goes over the tracks or, oh, on Freedom Boulevard?
So it says that, it says that that green line is a bike lane. And so I'm wondering why the bike lane won't continue all the way to Freedom. Why there isn't a slash mark there to continue that, that seems like a logical continuation.
Of the bike routes, sorry.
Six hundred south.
At six hundred south to the west of the number two in the yellow circle.
Continuing along six hundred south just gets into that derelict stretch that um is by the Amtrak station.
No, 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 it's before, so this is between Freedom and the overhead pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, that's trying to get the, the spot.
And the Amtrak is, is west of that.
Yes, this is that road that continues to the Amtrak.
Right.
So continuing people along there doesn't give them too much more access, it's also a pretty safe route. Just because it doesn't have bike lanes doesn't mean people can't bike on it and we will have the
Okay.
Crossing.
Because it's narrow and, okay, because I'm thinking when I ride my bike to the train station, it's very cumbersome to go up the elevator and up, so I can just zoom around and go in on Freedom faster and easier, so I generally ride over to Freedom, cross at the crosswalk there as a pedestrian and then get on the platform immediately.
Yeah.
And so I was wondering if, if that was intentional, that the bike lanes weren't going to go that far and you just have to become a car at that point, or if that's something that maybe could just be added because it is a logical continuation, I didn't know if there was a reason for it.
Well, if nothing else, it connects the bike lanes to each other, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
We didn't want to be too redundant with the proposed bike lane on five hundred south, which gives better westward connectivity and gets people really close to the station there at four hundred south. So the idea was that if somebody wanted to continue on a designated bike route, they are connected, they could move between them. But moving along six hundred south further west doesn't really bring you to anything and is
Okay.
Pretty
I would like to just point that out as something I disagree about because as a user, I do, it does bring me to the train station. It brings me to the train station more effectively and it wouldn't be that hard to paint. Just, I mean, the bike lane on six hundred south is crummy anyway, so it doesn't really make it that hard to. So that would be a recommendation that I would forward, I think, to the city council of something I would change about this. So it's a very easy thing and in my mind, it's not redundant because the whole point of this plan is to bring people to the train station, to the transportation spots safely and effectively, and that is another access for, for people to get there, so.
Yeah.
I would much rather do that than go up to five hundred, make a left on Freedom and come down on Freedom.
As that area narrows, just kind of connecting from where it ends at the number two, going left to the uh Freedom Boulevard line.
It does, it is tricky, it is tricky, yeah, it's just that one block, but.
It, I think gets a little bit narrower west of, on the western sides, it might need to be sharehouses instead of the bike lane.
But even on the south side of the road, to have that painted as a bike lane, because you're coming right out of the train station and going, lots of people come out that way and access to the east, and if we've got our bikeways that are going up two hundred and going up four hundred and eventually it seems logical to have that continuation of traffic flow from the train platform, Freedom, and then on six hundred south to just be marked. Even if it's not an amazing improvement, at least it would be marked so people could honor it.
Yeah, if that gets a majority vote, then feel free to put that as an approval with conditions. I can't recommend any of these changes without
No, no, it's fine, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, something that seems like a logical recommendation for me.
If this is recommended with approval, I will then take that to the engineering teams that I have an answer for them by the time this goes to council.
Okay, um, I have two other things. My, um, the brown area that is on the northeast corner of six hundred south and University Avenue. Um, I'm assuming that was slated for residential because it's not super intense commercial currently, and so it would be a logical place for redevelopment.
Yes.
My question is, why wouldn't you put that on the orange slash mark side where the current giant housing complex is going? And put the commercial on the other side where the housing isn't already? Because I, like, the orange and white slash marks are saying commercial full mixed use. I don't think there's a commercial use in that giant tower that's being built.
That's what was in the Mazer neighborhood plan, was to keep that southern edge of six, like along six hundred as mixed use, so we're following that, that's what constituents are like.
Is that what's in the plan for that project, they do have some in there? Okay, cuz I felt, I was afraid that we were saying this brand new project that doesn't include commercial, we're going to say we want it to be commercial when it's very unlikely that it would be knocked down and redeveloped, okay.
Yeah, there's small commercial there, the gas station and a few other industrial uses. Yeah, and as for that brown, as the viaduct is landing, it's gonna have, it's gonna hit wider, it's a wider stretch, the, the arc is longer than it used to be. Which is going to make those roads difficult to access from University Avenue, so maybe not ideal for commercial, but accessed along the backside, it could be good for some high density residential.
Okay, and then my last question is, in the blue section of the frontrunner station that's, that's got the slash marks in it. Um, you talked about U T A having ideas for a development, how does this allow for adequate station parking? We talked about this a little bit in our meeting last month. Even if we're not the end of the line, I still think a lot of people use the Provo train station in Provo and we have a large population that's constantly traveling. So how do we make sure that we don't get rid of all the sta, like, do we have standards for what station parking needs to be, or is this so new to us that we don't have these standards and we could inadvertently rezone our parking and not have adequate parking?
And then decrease ridership.
Yeah, and then decrease ridership because it's not convenient and whatever.
U T A has minimum ridership parking number spots per riders on average days and peak days, they have their formula for that. There are also two parking garages proposed in this area. The red stripe one right along University Avenue is where U T A wanted to put their parking so that the commercial employment mixed use was really close to the station and immediately accessible, they don't mind making people parking walk through that area. The other is this striped mixed use, which is a difficult parcel to access. Um, with the train crossing here, um U Dot has also said that they want to redo or to add a bridge going in over there, train tracks there on Freedom. So it's going to become increasingly difficult to access, it's a difficult parcel to plan for. The current plan is for a parking garage, ma- maybe including some commercial. This is something where the city would have to look at other partnerships, maybe work with U T A or others, but that could serve as parking for the downtown area. Parking for some of the adjacent mall commercial access as well as overflow for the station.
So is it a correct assumption that in order to rezone these, or to redevelop these so they weren't parking lots anymore? U T A would have to extend the train line somewhere else so that Provo's not the end of the line anymore? And then take ridership numbers to justify getting rid of that parking?
That's their plan.
It would be a data-driven move, not just a hopeful move?
Hmm.
Okay. That's all, um, oh, actually, I do have one more. The pink and purple slashed areas, those show on this one as well as the Center Street Station Plan. What is the vision for entertainment full mixed use, what does that land use mean?
The thing that we heard was lacking not only in the University Avenue plans and the frontrunner plans, but also back when I was one of the writers for the downtown master plan redo was that there was no commercial in this area or no entertainment in this area, and that's something people really wanted to see. It's maybe not appropriate right running along historic Center Street to have a big megaplex or something like that. But to put it somewhere where it's adjacent to the areas where we have hotels, it's adjacent to the conference center, it's still adjacent to Amtrak and frontrunner or U V X stations. These are, these would all be fantastic things, and this was the area where all of that fit together. So as it's redeveloping, it doesn't have to come in exclusively as entertainment, we don't have an entertainment zone that's going to force it. It will be a commercial zone that allows for it, or in this area more likely a downtown zone. But this signals to developers as they're looking at this area, this is something we want to see there. We often have people say, hey, I'm looking at this block, what does the city want to see? This gives us a consistent answer.
Perfect, thank you. I have some questions about um the stakeholders for your micro mobility on this, on these stationary plans?
Yeah.
Like, who are the stakeholders on these and, like, how did that come about, how do you figure this out?
Yeah. We reached out to a lot of people, uh, everyone who responded was invited to come, not everyone responded. We have representatives from Bird, the people who do the e-bikes and e-scooters, they were able to bring their data and their perspective in. We, of course, had representatives from Bike Walk Provo, we had two different representatives from BYU. Um, we also had a couple of people from U T A and U Dot looking at more regional trends and best practices as well. Those are the ones that I can definitively identify from the long acknowledgement section, I apologize. If anyone is listening and you were in that group and I missed you, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, and I, I sort of, I think I've talked about this in other situations, but um, and maybe it's not super easy to plan for, but I feel like one thing that we're missing on kind of all of the stationary plans is like, uh, and there's a couple of places where they have it, but like cut-throughs that are just micro mobility. Um, there's a few places, but I feel like making that more explicitly. Um, I don't know, maybe I missed it, but is it?
Twenty two thirty plan, we do have an aerial of a place where that's done well and we do specifically call out the need as we have these mega parking lots in the twenty two thirty north area.
And, yeah, are huge blocks generally, you know?
Um, in the future transportation section for every single section, the language is identical, verbatim in all of them. We have a section in green called Active Transportation Connections, it's the page right after the map or you two or three pages after the map, that uh in some cases gives examples where we can find good examples in the station area, some places we couldn't, and that's telling. But it sets out what they should look like, that they should be useful, walkable, have some sort of interesting feature design, feel safe. Um, and that they should be prioritized and also that they should be a priority in new projects coming in. But that in places that are slow to redevelop, the city is encouraged to work with existing current landowners to create connections appropriate, even if it's not our long-term solution.
So I guess the question is, it's um in all that you said, is like, is it specifically saying like micro mobility access, cuz I feel like, so this is what I saw as this um on the staff report, actually, it says ju- uh, under on page three on, this is the hmm, twenty two thirty north one, and it has all these, this list of things, three, four, it's like increased number of affordable units, et cetera, and then in transportation environment says implement the future active transportation map, infrastructure and improvements. Um I guess that's what you're referring to, right, like, that's the one that would have that?
Uh, it's
Just an implementation thing.
Um, do you have any of the plans open right now? Okay, uh, which one do you have open? All of them, let's go with twenty two thirty north since that's the one you pointed out, it's on pages fifty seven and fifty eight, it continues down.
Thank you.
Just to show you a good example.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is verbatim the language we have, it's, oh, I, uh, scroll up, it's one page off and this is a different printed version. But called Active Transportation Connections, that lays out connections, you can see halfway through the paragraph, E G, paseos, mid-block crossing, greenways, shared walkway, or sheltered walkways. Exactly what you're talking about, call that specifically.
Mostly paseos, yeah.
Yeah.
That's like, kind of the thing, I feel like, we have a lot of these mid-block crossings, you know, more, we have the Provo Trail, I think one of the big connectors for a lot of people to feel that safety um in this is those, and just like the smallness that it needs to feel like in this city and in these kinds of areas is be, is having those pedestrian-only like little footpaths. So anyway, I just would want to emphasize that, I'm glad it's in there, I, I wonder if there's a place
There's a small portion in the redevelopment chapter, which is where we figure most developers are going to be skimming, so we made sure to put it there and in our transportation chapter and in our implementation table.
I just want to make sure it's in there explicitly that this is something we need because I think that is one of the challenges that we need to really explicitly address because of the block sizes and all of it.
Totally agree.
Do you, just looking at this picture of the access trail to Walmart from Cardville Road, is that I thought you said that was something that was kind of a wink wink access trail, like the city doesn't manage it or it, so, so is that something, should say the unimproved access trail or something like that? Because your plans are to make it better than it is if
That's fair, it is currently an access trail, so the name isn't incorrect, if you want to scroll up, feel free to skim this paragraph as I'm talking, but we have this Cardville Access Trail section. Um, the city is aware of it, I brought it up to Parks and Public Works, both, everyone's aware of this. We would like to make it more official and cleaned up and ADA accessible, well-lit, paved, maintained. But we would have to have insane switchbacks and some expensive engineering to make it fully ADA accessible. We're going to explore some grants, that's why we have a goal for this and it's on our radar to do that with Public Works. Um, if that doesn't work, then we do identify another location here where perhaps we come down off the bridge of University, uh sorry, of Cardville Road that parallels along with University where it has already the height going up from the bridge, perhaps it could come down there on the northern edge of that Walmart development, that wouldn't be ideal, but this connectivity needs to be made, and if it can't be made here, then that's the next best.
Is there a timeline stated in here that says we want this to happen by?
There are timelines in the implementation
Okay, sorry, I don't have it all memorized.
Absolutely fine, that's my job, you're fine. Uh, let's see. Nine D is seek grant funds for the Cardville Access Trail and ninety is build the Cardville Access Trail. For seeking funds, it's twenty twenty thirty through twenty thirty two and building it is twenty thirty through twenty thirty five. Just giving ourselves some time to wrap up other projects before we put this on our capital improvement plan.
Does that fall in your jurisdiction that the planner has to follow up on this? Or does it fall on transportation or parks or who ma, who follows up to see if these goals are met in a timely manner?
It's on planning to follow up and assess the plans regularly to see how they're being implemented, but we would be reaching out to Public Works to see what they've done because they're the ones implementing it.
Cool, and just for your information, this is in my neighborhood district and people have really wanted this too. So I think there's a lot of motivation from the neighbors to push for it and continue the pressure, I guess, or the activity to push for it.
When we worked with the BYU students doing their mini practice station area plans, which was a really fun urban planning project for us and for them. The group that had this area set some students out with a counter to count how many people came down at a couple of different times, I think the most they found on a Saturday morning was forty, fifty something people in one hour, which is pretty well-tracked.
Yeah, a lot of people who live, like, there's a lot of people in my ward who live right there and they don't, a lot of them don't have cars.
Hmm.
So it doesn't make sense for them to go all the way around like you would if you had a car, it's just right there.
We mapped it out, it's one mile, we've mapped out the alternative route here, it's a full mile out of their way when they could just go downhill.
Yeah.
This was consistently identified by every stakeholder, we took this map to residents, we're really excited, this got like three hearts when we took it to our open house. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, excellent, I think that's the last one and you're probably tired of standing, so.
I could do this all day. Bring it.
Thing, you talked about a great, you talked about a park coming on down here, right?
Yeah.
And you said, we don't know where, it makes sense, but where, like, would it, which map would it be on, where, it just, there's not a lot of green space, like, I'm seeing one tiny little green mark in the four hundred station circle there and the rest doesn't seem to have trees or grass or big medians.
Yeah, there is a park just west of the station area, so it is about a half mile away from most residents. We would like something closer as this area gets more dense. Um, already about seventy five residents, or seventy five percent of residents are within a quarter mile of the park, we'd like to keep that up as this area intensifies. Our ideal would be along this stretch right here, perhaps on Freedom Boulevard, so it's near the station, people could have a place to play. As we're extending those design corridor standards for downtown along Freedom Boulevard, it would also make it just a really lovely place to be able to access to bike and walk to. There are some other areas around this portion that might make sense, you know, depending There are some other areas around this portion that might make sense, you know, depending on redevelopment. We identify some strategies in the plan. It might be something where we give extra density to a certain portion of the parcel. If the developer is willing to deed over a portion for a city park, we'll kind of see what we're working with depending on density and economic constraints. But we agree, there does need to be a plan here, and the future parks master plan will address this.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. Um, we'll now open this, the hearing for public comments. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If we have questions, we'll invite you to come back to the microphone at that time. This time is for comments only. If you have questions about an item, please speak directly with staff. Um, and I'd also note that this is for all five items together, so please try to let us know which station you're commenting on. Do we have anyone interested in commenting on any of these items? Okay, not seeing any. We'll bring it back to the commission. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. What are our thoughts here?
I have no problem with these plans. We've seen them a lot and given a lot of feedback. The only issue I have is that missing link between freedom and one hundred west that I feel is unnecessarily absent.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so I'm thinking maybe it might be best, let's just go item by item. Quickly discuss any amendments we'd want to make, any recommendations? And then we can make a motion and vote on it and go to the next item. I think that'll be the most efficient, so uh, we'll start with item number two, I think it was, right?
Yeah.
Um, which is the twenty-two thirty north plan. Um, any comments specifically about this one or things we'd like to see that aren't there? Things that need to be removed, anything like that?
This is an overarching thing that I wanted to bring up. We were talking about, oh, well, that's the legal speed versus the um, actual speed, because, you know, I looking at the twenty-two thirty uh, plan and it's five fifty west and I'm like, oh, we can't do a shareo there, but there's a shareo on Center Street and people still go thirty-five on Center Street, as you probably know. I I think that that's like an overarching issue that I feel like is kind of unaddressed. Like design speed being correct and also the design standards leaving it open that way. So it's an implicit what do I say? It's like, it has approval to go faster than is appropriate. And especially in these areas, it's going to be less and less safe to allow that. And I, the one thing I feel like is a little bit missing, maybe, and maybe it's not the right place, but I feel like there should be some mention of amending our our design standards for streets to actually be the proper design speed. Um, and maybe adopt like nicer standards for this kind of urban transit oriented situation. So just a thought, like, I've been talking about NACTO a lot, that's the NACTO standards. And I think that this is a great opportunity to implement them in a small place and see what they can do. Like in a focused place, it's not like a huge, like, citywide yet, you know, like it's
A place that has a lot of shoulder space to make modifications to as well. That's why they're going so fast on that road is because it's wide, but only one lane on each side.
Almost everywhere, but overall, overall, though, I mean, like, the addressing the design, the issues of speed using you know, the design of the street is the most effective long-term. And I think that um, we rely a lot on people hopefully noticing the speed limit sign. And there's just like, people don't think about it right then, you know, um, they're in habit, they're in habitual thinking mode and everything. And so I think this is an opportunity where we could actually make a big impact that would be an example for the rest of the city and allow maybe the kind of vision that neighborhoods could then request these like changes. Because like, this is what I've been asking for on my street forever. And it's like, oh, this is our standard. That's always the answer. There's no money and this is the standard. You know, and so I would really love to see some some language in there that addresses design speed and and adopting it more innovative, more neighborhood, more beautiful standards for streets.
So is that how you'd word it as recommendation is?
Would say, yes, change the code to make sure, uh, design speed.
Within these areas?
Within these areas. What I say is that you're designing to the actual this speed, you want the street to be not ten miles over the speed limit, because that's what it is right now. And potentially adopt like the NACTO standards for these areas.
So what do you guys think about that recommendation?
I feel like that's something we would just pass along to staff or city council or engineering department, but not tag on to these plans, because that's a citywide thing. That's not just.
So you're saying you wouldn't put it here because you want to see it citywide?
I think that's, I think that's what you're saying too, right, Barbie?
I do, but I think this is a more practical way to get that done, because if people see it uh, working, then they'll see the examples, because usually what's been happening is if we try and make a change, people don't understand what's, what we're trying to do.
They've never seen it.
They've never seen it, and maybe it slows them down their car one time and they call and complain, you know, like, so I feel like it would be a good like baby steps kind of situation.
Well, what if we do a straw poll to see how many of us feel like we care enough about enacting safer street standards that we recommend to the municipal council? That these station areas are a great opportunities to try them in small spots. Where we know we're going to have a lot of people coming together.
Before we do that, I'd love to invite Hannah up and just, are there any issues that would arise that we're not seeing with making that recommendation?
It would be easier if it was something in text. If it's something that we put in the implementation plans as a goal, we have to report annually to the state on it. And I don't know that we've had the time to really talk with engineering and vet through committing ourselves to that. But I could put something in text that this could be a good area for future, future exploration. Um, I also attend the T-MAC meetings. We have one tomorrow. I can bring it up with them. And this seems like it's aligning with what they've talked about and put it on engineering's radar too.
Yeah, because we've talked about it in T-MAC meetings a lot and having it be in a small area as a sample size. You know, just a small test, like we talked about doing that on Center Street and trying some of the new speed strategies and bike sta- strategies and parking backward strategies and whatever. If you can, although they didn't do it, but if you could do it in a small space, it would be a whole lot more manageable to say this is the small space we're going to do it in.
That's exactly the issue, because it's uh, and especially, I feel like it's easier to convince both the public, you know, the city are co-citizens and I guess engineering, that it should be done in a place that really needs it. Like, like obviously needs it, like these kinds of places, they're going to have more density and more traffic and more more, if we're making it transit oriented, there's going to be more walking, more biking, like you said. And these are places where that's one of the most dangerous situations where the, the cars come in contact with non-cars. I mean, and any other cars as well, but like especially people who are not in a car. So that's my concern. If we can maybe recommend that, I mean, say something, because whenever I ask about this, I get kind of battered back about, I've asked literally everybody I could find in the city to talk about this and I just feel like this is an opportunity to include it.
The one other suggestion I would have is please specify whether you were talking about one certain station area or if you want this in all four of the plans.
I feel like we could say um, find it, find a critical section of multi-modal use in each of the station area plans and implement changes that we hope would benefit the city in other areas as well, like use them as use these high traffic areas as, as a, a way to try something new that will that maybe could be a pattern for the future.
I do think there are opportunities here. I'm looking at the standards right now. I may have a lot to do with bike lanes, how they're constructed, crosswalks, how they're constructed, bull bouts at the intersections. We're already talking about doing a lot of these. And so maybe it's as simple as saying, as we do, we should look at these NACTO standards and implement them the best we can. Kind of thing, and maybe it is just a Texas thing as an aspirational saying thing, saying we'll do, we'll look at it and see how it fits.
Do we need to do a straw poll to make sure that we all agree with asking Hannah to add some language about this?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, we can just do it over it, just how many would support that as a straw?
I would support that. Yeah.
Okay, so that looks like a winner there, so we'll make that recommendation when we make our motion.
I got one more little one for you, Hannah. You spoke about a bike, a walking trail right there in this item two, right? It goes by that where there's a car dealership now, am I right? Didn't you talk about a walking trail?
It's coming from like Grandview.
Yeah, to the back of the Walmart.
Walmart.
Wasn't there another walking trail you spoke about, though?
That was over in the front runner station to the west of the front runner station.
She was talking about.
And also to the east of the library.
Yeah.
Well, also five fifty west, because of the width, looking at some other things there, right? Is that what you're talking about, Anne?
There could be a multimodal path on the side of the road. Is that what you were thinking?
Maybe.
We could do a multimodal path.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, like, I just was like, okay, what is that? What? And then that was it. I just wanted a little bit more explanation on what that path looks like.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I understand it, it's like on university where you have the bike lane kind of, well, the bike trail next to the road, right? It's slightly separated. And people can walk and bike on it and not be right on the sidewalk.
Probably more like South State Street where it's adjacent to the road and there's really nothing fancy about it, but it's wide enough to accommodate different users.
Like a wide divided sidewalk that's generally eight to ten feet if you can get it.
Okay, I get it. Yeah.
I had the same question. After you mentioned that, I noticed that we didn't, we didn't say anything about that in the plan. What was, remind me what the reasoning is there?
It was on the page before this map, but it wasn't the plan.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, it's just not on the map.
The number three.
It was the number.
Oh, yeah.
Because she said that it's supposed to be shareos, but they're recommending something different.
That's right.
Number three is for the whole stretch. That recommendation that it not be shareos comes from our engineering department. We initially added a shareos, because that was
What page, what page was that, Hannah? I've got it here, I'll just.
My version is, I think, one page number off because we added an extra graphic, but I can get you close if Sandy you want to. It's going to be in page roughly fifty-five, might be fifty-six in the new version. Oh, in twenty-two thirty, yes. Yeah, scroll up about three pages.
Yeah, okay, you're right. Fifty-four and my, and the one online. Okay, thank you.
Fifty-four. Yep. It's number three there.
Yeah, that's great.
That three is for the whole stretch. It's just one point.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. Are we ready for our motion then? Barbie, you want to make it? Put your recommendation in there?
Okay, remind me what I said, that we choose, what do you say, Lisa? Choose you had good language about it. Like a, a small place where we can implement like innovative design standards to solve these problems kind of thing?
That sounds great.
Okay. Small.
I would say that we use these as small centers.
Um, I have a question. In the staff recommendation, Hannah, it says um, recommend approval of the proposed conservation and resiliency plan. Is that a typo? Or is this considered a conservation and resiliency plan?
No, that is a typo, because I was trying to do all four staff reports and I thought I was consistent.
I think they all say it, so we just won't read it that way. Yeah, you were consistent. Good job.
I apologize for that oversight. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to say, okay, um, I move that we recommend approval of item two development services request adoption of twenty-two thirty north stationary plan with the added language to use these areas also as small innovative opportunities for changes to the design speed and design standards like NACTO.
Perfect. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion before we vote?
I think I'm generally in favor of the motion, but I still have uneasiness about changing those school areas to housing. So I'm probably going to vote against it, but that's my only reason is just the inadvertent message of development that that might send. So I, maybe that's cheating to tell you what my vote's going to be, but um I wouldn't change the motion because I think overall I really like the plan, but I'm concerned about that message.
And you're talking about the schools that are in that shopping center by the hair school, like the hair school and the, is it like high school, like science high school?
Yeah, just that those are compatible uses with a high transportation area, so I'm comfortable with not changing the zoning there.
And my question on that is, I thought schools were allowed uses in a residential zone. I mean, most schools are in residential zones, right?
Yeah.
So it's not even non-conforming.
It's not non-conforming. It just, I, it's the message that it sends that that's not appropriate at high-density development for a transit corridor.
But what would we put? Because what zone would schools go in?
I guess that's right. Maybe I just need to hush.
Are they commercial right now? Aren't they commercial?
Well, I think schools can go in any zone or almost any zone.
I just don't want to replace a school that's well-located with stacked housing.
Oh, I totally agree with you there.
Whether it's allowed or not is irrelevant to me. I don't want to recommend that the school move and housing go in. But that's, we're discussing the motion, so I'm just saying because I agree with your motion for the most part, I'm just stating that's my only conflict. So when you hear my vote, that's why.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, let's move forward with the vote, starting with Commissioner Self. Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so the motion passes four to one. Okay, let's go and quickly discuss item three, our next station plan on here. This one is the University Avenue Corridor. Any thoughts, recommendations, et cetera, on this one? I'll say for me, this one's the most straightforward of all of them.
Yeah.
Um, it's really fitting what I think most of us envision this area becoming in the future anyway. It's a kind of our downtown urban zone. It's got good public transport. It's already got pretty high density, et cetera. It's not doing much.
Yeah, the only concern I had actually was, um actually the shareos on Center Street, because I think that the speed doesn't really in, unless it's a really quiet time of a day, it is not comfortable to use a shareo on that. And I sort of wondered if I mean, because I, like, I would literally take any, I do, I take any other street north of Center Street instead to go across. And so I just wonder if that's the best if that's still going forward, or if there's, I feel like either we need to say never mind about the shareos, because people won't stop going that fast, or do something more to make people slow down so that you could actually use a shareo without feeling someone's going to just be speeding off every way and kill you.
You mean the existing shareos on Center Street, that section there?
Yes.
Uh, the city has long had a goal in its downtown plan to explore taking that stretch of Center Street down to one lane and routing traffic over to one hundred north. This would be an ideal solution for that, if that were ever to be.
Okay, great. I agree. And I mean, if we can make, for example, um, not to belabor it, but yeah, if it could be like one lane and then like a whole lane for bikes or like almost a whole lane for bikes. Be, if that's what we're going to do and make it more micro mobility friendly, that would be great.
I'm sure that'll be part of the studies. Yeah.
So it sounds like it's already in the plans. We may not need to add that one here, right? So.
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other items to bring up on this one? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that um, the planning commission recommended approval of item number three, uh, the adoption of the University Avenue Station area plan.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Okay, we'll start the voting with Commissioner Self.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
And I'll vote aye, so this one passes unanimously. Let's go to item four.
I think we said we didn't need to, because it sounds like they already have that in mind with Center Street.
But I think she's talking about the one we did on the previous one.
Sorry, so that it's approved with condition, the condition being recommending the language that you recommended in twenty-two thirty and all the other plans?
I think so.
I just want to make sure that that was the right.
We didn't, I didn't make the motion like that, but I think when we read the, when we made the first motion, the intent was that was for all four of these.
That's the intent I took. I just want to make sure.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's a great clarification.
Do we need to vote again?
Okay.
Thanks, Hannah.
Okay, item four, this is the um, Joaquin Station Area. Any comments on this one?
Um, I share the same concerns that Barbie brought up about commercial being immediately south of campus, but I understand the reasoning for it. And it doesn't make sense to put it on seven hundred with the stations and their divided roads, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that would make me want to change it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that knowing that it could change, it could be changed as a need, like if they find that that's actually really dumb to do. Yeah, I, I, I think that knowing that it could change, it could be changed as a need, like if they find that that's actually really dumb to do, I trust that the process will fix that, like, as the developments happen. Cause for example, say somebody develops there and they put some commercial and doesn't do well because people hate driving to that. Like that'll, we'll have, they'll have to change it because they won't get what they need from that space, which is what I think will happen.
Well, and given the fact that most of the area that's colored there is commercial full mixed use is owned by the university. It's highly unlikely we're gonna get a lot of development pressure there to do that anyway, so.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, I think, just to be honest, just to throw this out there, so it's on a record somewhere. It would be really great if that UVX station was on eight hundred north. I think you'd get better student usage. Um, I think you actually could put it so that the bus lanes are the north side of the road. And then all the cars could still turn on all the roads and everything, cause it's kind of, you know, next to each other instead of in the middle dividing everything. Um, and since there's no roads that go up that way, it'd be really smooth, be really nice, but.
I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but why didn't we do that again?
We don't know. UTA decided.
I remember something about UTA then.
Yeah, it, this suggestion came up in one of our technical advisory, uh, committee meetings from Vern, who's great at thinking through these kinds of problems. And all the UTA rooms in the rep went, or all the UTA reps in the room went, huh.
Um, so they're on board. It's a good idea, but we're not doing it.
They lack the budget to make the shift right now. It'd be astronomically expensive to shift this area when there are other areas that could benefit from having to stop at in the first place. So it's not their highest priority. But eventually they're gonna need to be redoing their infrastructure. We put it in the plan just to make sure that it's something we could keep in the conversation. There is, there is a map for how that could go as an alternative in the plan.
I do think that that is a good idea with about the turning situation, but also having some, like, the bus divide and then have a divide the street so that there's only like microability. Well, it's like bus, so the cars aren't impeded, but then micro mobility above that, protecting it from the cars. So like, that would be like ideal, but, um, we can dream.
I foresee fifty years of like, we always wanted to put it there, but we just never did, cause we never got to it, cause there.
I don't know, guys. We're getting the UVX stop on ninety, so miracles happen.
Yeah, and I think that the development potentially, I mean, on the one hand, having this redeveloped with the current infrastructure could cause difficulty in changing it. I also think it could also put pressure to change it, so I think it'll just have to see.
Okay, are we ready for a motion on this one?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I, um, motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number four, development services request the adoption of the Joaquin Station Area Plan with the implied conditions from before. Suggestions.
Okay, so that's been seconded. Any discussion before we vote? Okay, uh, Commissioner Self.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so that one passes unanimously. Let's go to item five. This is the front runner station area of this and four hundred south, both of them together. Any comments? I know we had some comments on the park, but that's already being looked at in the future.
Six south.
Did we wanna do a straw poll to see if I'm the only one who thinks there should be something about a bike lane extending to Freedom?
That's the, that's the next one I was gonna bring up, so I, I personally agree with you completely.
I agree too.
Um, it's just one block.
Yeah.
One and a half blocks.
It would be a really easy piece of paint and green line on a map.
Yeah, and I can tell you as an occasional bike commuter, I haven't done as much lately because I have to drive around a lot, but, um, I'm not gonna jog up around a block. I'm just gonna ride on the road.
And it's, unless there's a train crossing, I will always go that way.
Yeah.
So.
If there's a train there, you might jump off and go up that.
I'll go up the elevator if there's a train, but if not, it's much faster to access the platform by going around that way, so.
Yeah.
I know there's not a lot of room, but there's a whole lot of really crummy bike lanes in the city and I don't know why we can't just put some paint on the ground saying give the bikes some room.
Well, and especially, this is an extremely central point in this entire, it's like literally the center of the station area map.
Yeah.
And I feel like that's like kind of embarrassing almost to like, by the way, there's this, um, like.
There's this place of no connectivity.
Right, we just like ignore, I, I think it's totally worth, I think this is one of the most worthwhile buckets of paint we'll ever use, you know?
Okay, so this is three of us out of five. What about?
Yeah.
Okay, we all agree that that's something we would recommend.
Yep, sounds like it.
Okay.
Any other comments on this one before we make a motion?
That, well, I will just say, um, this isn't maybe, maybe this won't result in something we're gonna add or anything, but just, this is the one where it really kind of, um, stuck out to me how sometimes these, this is why I asked about the stakeholders, but sometimes the, the bike, especially the bike infrastructure is not in a place where it's comfortable. And I know this is a tough area because it's so much traffic and stuff, but I just feel like in general, like, we need the the heavier duty infrastructure where it's the hardest in some of these areas and then more areas that are away from that to like have bike, like ownership or bike presence, like delineated. And so I guess this kind of goes back to what I was saying about the NACTO things, cause I think that will, it will solve it, but this was the one I was like, whoa, this is like, these are areas I would never bike on. I would never wanna be on the bike lane on University Avenue. I always avoid University Avenue, you know, stuff like that. So it's sort of like. Yeah, that's.
So University Avenue might be a really good spot to try out some NACTO standards so that you don't die.
Uh, UDOT and MAG were the ones with the plan to put bike lanes on University Avenue and to continue those. Um, we as staff have expressed strong concerns to both of those organizations about that. This stretch of University Avenue is also the overland shipping connection point between I fifteen and I eighty. It's a exit ramp for the highway, an exit stretch, a hard, high speed arterial, and from so many reasons, these are terrible places for bike lanes. The plan proposes, uh, one hundred south as a bike corridor. So giving them their own space, their own breathing room, turning that into something like two hundred east that you see going up through Joaquin.
The problem with that is that it dead ends at the post office.
That is, yes, the major downside. Oh, to, at the post office? Uh, yes, and the New Skin Block there, yes.
Yeah.
So we could either explore ways to sign around it, explore some negotiation between the buildings, but.
And one thing too is that the re, rebuild of the bridge on University Avenue is going to improve biking at least along that little stretch. That's one good thing.
Yeah, the bike lanes on University aren't going to be taken away anytime soon, but if we can give people a safer alternative, this may be off the busy road. That's, I, we think worth doing.
Okay. We ready for a motion?
I can do it.
Okay.
Can I just say, sorry, I, I do think that we should encourage them to rethink the University Avenue being like such a major bike. I think that the, it, it would be more worth the infrastructure effort and money to put these, you know, to do something elsewhere. I don't know. Maybe that's insane, but.
You know, I would say don't rethink it because I would rather have it there than have to ride it and not have it there. Because they're going to improve the, you have to get from, you have to get across the train tracks and that is the most efficient way. Especially if there's a train coming.
Yeah.
And with the UDOT rebuild of the bridge, improving the biking across the bridge, you do wanna be able to connect to that. And so as much as I'd like to stay off of University Avenue, having those lanes on University Avenue makes it, it gives me one block to get from.
Right.
From one place to another and then get off of it as quickly as possible, but at least there's a designated space for me.
Well, can we recommend then, this is what I have an issue with about especially that stretch. Um, even like, you know, they're gonna, I imagine widen the bridge and all that stuff. I think these need to be designated as separated bike lanes, like actually physically separated bike lanes. That's my opinion.
Can we even do that when it's UDOT's, um, purview?
Can we just make a suggestion?
Has already been agreed on. Construction's already underway, so it's too late to change the bridge.
But you're talking about the rest of university.
Bike lane on the rest of University Parkway because there's the parking pull offs, so people wouldn't be able to access on-street parking.
Yeah, I'm talking about just the bridge really, but it's too lame.
Bridge design is often done, unfortunately, and.
And I already expressed my dissatisfaction with their non-separated bikeway, so our voice was heard.
Maybe if we get first east as.
I'll say it again.
Viable alternative when University Avenue is.
But once again, having those, having at least a separate, you know, more than a two-foot sidewalk with asphalt shavings all over it to get to five hundred south so that you can go over and connect with the.
Yeah.
Bike ways to go north to where most people are heading.
Yeah.
It is an improvement.
Yeah.
All right, ready for me to make a motion?
Ready.
All right, I, um, would like to make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item five. Development Services request the adoption of the front runner and four hundred south station areas plan. Um, as a planning commission, we all feel that this would be important to enact some safety standards as we've expressed before. And then we also all feel that, um, the bike lane on six hundred south should continue between one hundred west and Freedom.
A second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Self?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so that one passes unanimously. Okay, do we need a break or should we keep going here?
Thanks, Hannah.
Let's keep going. Okay, we're gonna push forward. Item six, Brayden Hampton requests project plan approval for a sixty-two unit townhome development in the Pro A thirty-six Spring Creek High Occupancy Zone located at twelve twenty-five east sixteen hundred south. And Nancy Robinson is presenting for us.
Great. So this is a project that was actually, uh, previously approved in April of twenty nineteen. Uh, that approval expired due to the lack of action within twelve, um, the required twelve month period. And additionally, there was a need to define, um, the, and plat each individual unit. So it necessitated a resubmission for this application. But they have, uh, six point three five acres. There are sixty-two four-bedroom, four-bathroom, single-family attached townhomes. And each unit has a two-car garage and there are an additional one hundred and thirty-eight surface parking stalls, so there's a total of two hundred and sixty-four stalls. They do have amenities, um, including a rooftop space for each unit. And then landscaped open space, walkways, a gathering pavilion and pickleball courts and staff recommends approval for this project plan.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Okay, I've got one.
I have a question.
Okay. Did this go through the point system? To.
No, it did not, because it's got, um, its own zone.
Oh, it's a pro, yeah.
It was his own.
Yep.
Created zone, Prozone. So it followed those standards.
I can't tell on the map, but this is my question. Um, does this public road back here? It looks almost like.
It doesn't go.
It doesn't go through yet. I think that would be an improvement that would happen. It dead ends at the property.
Okay, so it doesn't go through down to the other things below it, south of it? Okay, cause I'm wondering, that would be great, uh. So that'll be, will that be done with this or?
I'm not sure exactly, cause I do know that they're going to build it in, um, a couple of phases.
Uh-huh.
Uh, maybe that's something that the applicant can address.
Okay, I'll ask. Thank you.
Yep.
Can you tell us what was made unique about this zone or that required a, a unique zone?
One of the things that's unique about it is the fact that they allowed, um, four-bedroom or bathroom. They made it single-family homes. And so even though single-family is usually defined as, um, three un, unrelated individuals, these can have four unrelated individuals in them. There is, like I said, a, a bathroom. These are some floor plans, but they do have, um, a bedroom and a bathroom, four of each. So that's one of the things, um, I'd say that's the, the biggest one, uh, and the density, I couldn't tell you exactly what, you know, the higher density it was percentage-wise, but that is also something.
Slightly higher density.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually looks like it's four and a half bathrooms. Is that right? Cause you've got a powder room on the main floor.
Um, there could be.
I'm seeing three upstairs, one at the bottom and then the half.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I have a question for staff. If this was approved already, are we obligated to approve it again? Or are we mostly obligated to approve it again because it meets all the code requirements? Well, it does meet all the code requirements for that and I don't, I mean, I do know that they said, uh, you know, that I was advised that because it did not get developed within the twelve-month period, that it, um, needed to come back, but there is another thing, I don't know if you can see, so if you look at this map, how there's, um, sixty-two units. For some reason, when the zone went through, um, if you can see these little ones right here, it was platted so that there were two units in each.
Like thirty-one duplexes is what it looks like.
Right, and so I don't think there was the plan for somebody to buy two units of each thing. They, I think they wanted to have it platted so that each individual unit could be sold. So not being around twenty nineteen or before when, when that went through, I'm not sure why it wasn't separated to begin with.
So the zoning is in place. What expired was the project plan. So as long as this project plan meets the zone, then that would be our motivation to approve it. And this is one of those unique places where a batching single overlay zone was approved for the four people to live together. The reason for that was the neighborhood plan was trying to create a place where a whole lot of students who were over-occupying housing to the north and east would hopefully move into this area, was providing a place for them to go. That was the reasoning in the neighborhood plan that teed the ball up for this to be approved.
I just see this as a bad can of worms, but there's nothing I can do about it.
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, so you said that that was the intention. Have other things been built and did that work? Has that worked or is it just?
This is the only one that was built for the students.
Okay.
This, this is the only parcel out there that has a student housing overlay.
Cause I thought this actually would be. It's a nice size for big family.
I know. What do you, is it only reporting that finds out if they're overoccupied? Cause as soon as I see this, I see someone with dollar signs in their eyes who puts two in each room and there's plenty of bathrooms in there to pack those people in.
Yeah, so it would only be reporting.
Is that the can of worms that you're referring to?
Yeah, as soon as I saw four-bedroom, four-bathroom, I was like, dude, those are gonna turn into.
The parking is a limiting factor, is it not? I mean.
Has it stopped anyone anywhere else?
But, but where else does it park here, you know?
There's this new public road.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. I was saying, okay.
Okay, that, you've answered my question, which basically means I have to smile and wave, so.
Plug your nose and, yay.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
We'll now open this item to public comments, or actually, sorry, the applicant is here, right? So we'll give the applicant fifteen minutes uh, for your presentation. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Following your presentation, we'll ask you any questions that we have.
Name and city, right?
Correct.
Okay, Brayden Hampton from Pacey.
Okay.
So I, I'm with Flagship Homes. We came into this project after it had, was partially completed. So if you look back at your site plan, everything that is dark on the asphalt is installed. And then a majority of the infrastructure has already been in place or set in place and surveyed and passed off by the city. Uh, this project failed to be completed due to the original owners, it's just some constraints on their ends and we're coming in trying to resolve this. We've purchased it. We worked with Nancy to get it to the point that it's at now and are excited to get our little portion of Provo under construction and completed. Uh, I don't really have anything else to add to what Nancy had said. Uh, we are planning rooftop decks, four beds, four baths. We've parceled out the units individually so they're not duplexes. We would like to sell these to single families and that's the angle that we're directing our marketing.
Can you tell me why the red portion is red over there? Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so originally the portion of red was red. So there originally were three owners on this project. Uh, I grouped it on the portion closest to State Street that is now complete. I grouped it on the portion in the middle and I grouped it on the portion in the red and the individuals. And the individuals in the red one will be broken out into a separate phase. Uh to where they could control the timing of that construction. We've come in and our contract will take over everything, our pre-construction meeting, if we pass tonight, is gonna be held tomorrow with staff. We plan just to get in and get everything done at one time.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, Lisa?
Do you, do you have an image of what the rear facade looks like because? Um it looks like it's set back a little bit on the top two floors.
Yeah, good, good question. Not in the presentation here and I felt to bring uh additional imagery to show that. It would look like your standard rear load three-story townhome, so we would have windows where the kitchen are at and the in the bathroom. The powder room on that second floor and then you'd have windows above uh on the third floor for those two bedrooms. Uh the step back that you see is actually that stairwell that extends to the rooftop patios where we have. Uh on some units applying roughly one hundred and sixty-four square feet, on others, it's about a hundred and ninety-four square feet on the roof. And that serves to play as part of multi amenity and open space on this project.
So it comes up from the back of the bedrooms to the top floor?
Yeah, good question. So the stairwell will will come up the one side. Uh it'll come up basically center of the. Of the units and it'll cut through.
Sandy, can you go to the floor plans?
Yeah. It'll cut through one of the closets. Yeah, hopefully that.
So what I'm looking at is the bottom left drawings, the the exterior units have. A little bit of a setback on that rear facade. Assuming that's the rear.
Yeah, that's more.
So bottom left Sandy, not bottom right.
That's. That specific step is to allow for articulation some, instead of having a flat wall.
Okay, so that's artist, that's not the stairwell that you're talking about.
No, I apologize, I missed.
And is that the rear or the front?
So the 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 front would be uh.
That's the rear.
Okay, that's why I was wondering what the rear looked like.
So it'll pop out when you come up there.
Okay, um then I have another question about the. The landscape plans. Mostly about parking and access. So whichever one shows that, maybe the one that had the red on the left. Are those parking spots? Additional parking spots in the front of the house and then the garages are in the back?
Yeah, so the rear loads, you'll see a waterway and a driveway in. The corridor between the units, so you will pull in there and park in the back. The widths are thirty-two feet, so that allows for turning in with a nineteen-foot car, your standard.
Okay.
Oh, great.
So that's what that little um line is, is that drainage grate?
Yeah, so that's the wall.
Middle of that access.
And then the parking is at the front of the units uh. Non-assigned, um but there's sufficient there for each theme.
Okay.
We'll have two car garages if there are any questions on that.
Okay.
I have a question. How many units do you plan to keep and how, it's just. Your establishment, right? It's not the four owners or the three owners you talked about before?
We 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 bought everything.
Okay, so how much do you plan to keep and how much do you plan to sell?
Zero. Flagship Home sells to single-family residents.
Okay. And by single-family residents, you just mean one owner at a time cuz these are not gonna be sold with the intent that families will live in them?
We can't stipulate who comes in and buys that would just market at a rate uh that's competitive to the market and the buyers.
And they're all going on the open market then? Okay, wha- what do you, I know this is early, but what do you guys estimate just generally will be the the selling price?
Yeah, so if you were to go a block and a half north of this specific project, there are existing units that are four-bed, four-bath that are going in now. They don't have the rooftop decks. We just need to be within range of those units to to sell, so.
And those are how much?
They're selling for uh four sixty-four last I checked, so uh. Relative is is.
Sure.
It's, I mean, affordable is relative these days, but but that's that's the price of a townhome in Provo. That's why I live in it now. It's crazy, so.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll now open it uh to public comments. Um we've all heard this before, so. Uh if you want to comment on this, please come up and you'll have two minutes to speak. Not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Staff, do we have any say on the appearance of these? Or is there no design purview of? The boxy nature of these beasts?
Not for that specific zone.
Okay.
That's something I thought of too that maybe we should talk about because for a while, I mean, actually since the. The one that I mentioned earlier in the study session that were by brick oven, you know, um. A lot of the things we see, I think, are. Not beautiful and they won't stay beautiful mainly. They'll look rundown very quickly. And I think that's something that we could talk about in general, but not for this maybe, but in the future.
So no, nothing we can do about that.
No, what's your concern though?
I think they're really boxy, so they're like not attractive to begin with and I think they'll be outdated very soon. I think they're trying to look modern, but they're.
Yeah.
But there's no re- standard for that, so.
Well, and studies show that most people like traditional design and then it is minder.
Okay, I think that's more a question of what materials he's using. Like I think there were rain screens on there and what. Do you know what I'm saying? Like the quality of material here is a huge factor and whether or not it endures and what.
That's probably the design standards we're talking about, yeah.
Well, I, we're talking about the silhouette, like the boxiness and I'm like eh. That's okay. I'm just like, I'm more concerned with what the material choices are.
I am grateful that there's a little bit of a setback, so it's not a straight line on the backside, but.
And that there's, and that there's windows back there, that part's good, a rooftop, that's not cheap, glad that's there. I mean, so.
There's a variation in window sizes, that's nice too.
So, I mean, we could ask what the materials are if we're curious, but I don't know that it's gonna make a difference. Is it just stucco and? I this is a, this is a question for you, sorry.
You move, you're not supposed to move.
Three or four different materials on there?
What?
Yeah.
But we've got, you've got brick and stucco.
You do. So you've got thin brick on the bottom floor and then as you transition up, you've got stucco at the center sections and then a hardy-type material cementatious board. Um on the remainder and then as you wrap around the back, the sides will have stucco and then we have. It's called like window framing, basically framing the windows in the back with with additional cementatious type materials.
I take it back, it's not rain screen. Whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
Well, I would just um recommend that you look at the condos that are on one hundred West. And. Three hundred North?
Is that right next to Smith's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they haven't weathered well and they're, they're similar aesthetic where they look really cool.
Agreed.
But then they're like filled with mold and stuff because they. The weathering hasn't happened well for them.
We do have a very similar product that is now five years old in Lehigh. It's called Lotus Vaseo. We do own and rent that product. And and that's me personally, um so we plan to mimic materials there. If you're ever in Lehigh, check it out, Lehigh Main, Van Mases. Uh it's weathered well, but we share the same concern.
Okay.
We want repeat customers.
Yeah.
Boils down to quality.
What's that place called you said? Lotus?
Lotus Vaseo, V Vaseo.
Vaseo.
Yeah, so a three-story product, very similar to this.
So Vaseo Townhomes, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I I I agree with her recommendation cuz it's about branding. It's, I mean, maybe the que- the question of immediate, like, oh, you're gonna sell these anyway. Like, you're not gonna worry about it in five years on the road, but I do think that uh. This is something that that's gonna affect like your rent.
Yeah. Excellent, thank you again.
Are there any, wait just a second, I have one more question. Are there any community amenities proposed with this or is it just the houses?
Yeah, the zoning code requires pickleball courts and a park.
Oh, that's right, I remember that.
To have two pickleball courts there in the center. If you go back to the site, we have power lines and there's a section where we can't plan housing. It's perfect for those courts.
Okay, I forgot that that was in there, thank you.
Okay.
Most of my concerns are irrelevant, so I feel like these guys.
There's zoning questions.
Yeah, they they want to have a good product and. They are meeting the zoning code, so. I'm going to say let's approve it and. Wish for the best.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, shall we make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I move, uh this is item number six. I move that the planning commission uh recommend approval for. The project plan. Consisting of sixty-two unit townhome development in the Pro A three-six Spring Creek High Occupancy Zone. At twelve twenty-five East sixteen hundred South.
Um we don't need to recommend approval, we are actually the approving body for this.
We are, thank you.
Yeah, it says it in the staff report, but yes.
I recommend that we approve said item number six.
Call second back.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start voting. Commissioner South?
Aye.
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 And I will vote aye as well, so this one passes unanimously. Let's go to item seven, making good headway here. Sure, I'll do that. So uh just so people here are aware, Commissioner South needs to leave at eight thirty at the latest and so if we are still discussing this item. And he steps out, that's why, that's why. Um Georgetown Development requests concept plan approval for a six-town home development in a proposed LDR zone. Located at twelve hundred North Independence Avenue and Mary Barnes is uh presenting this one.
We're doing six. We're doing these.
Seven, eight.
Seven and eight.
Oh, do you wanna read the?
I can do that happily. Uh also, item eight, Georgetown Development requests a zone map amendment for the MP. Zone to the LDR zone in order to build a six-town home development located at twelve hundred North Independence Avenue.
Gorgeous, thank you. Alright, so um. This property is kind of right at the tip, um the northern end of Independence Avenue in the Grandview South neighborhood. Um right now, it's zone manufacturing park. Um the applicant is wanting to rezone to LDR to do those six townhomes. Um this just shows the current um zoning map, the area map, and that's the general plan. Uh future land use map. Easy, you can see the future land use for this area technically is residential. If this is approved, then the applicant will have to come back for a PPA and also do a subdivision plaque with um with staff, so. If this is approved through the city council, you guys will see this again. Um this is just that proposed zone map amendment. Okay, so um this concept plan shows six townhomes with a drive aisle that um goes in between them. You'll see kind of a better um. Better example of this later on the presentation, but the drive aisle kind of uh declines. You'd be driving down a small um little hill type thing to come around the back where um. Where the residents would be parking. Um there's two car garages in each unit and the driveways are big enough to also fit two cars. Um technically, it's also required to have to visit parking spaces as well. Um each townhome has three bedrooms, two point five, two point five bathrooms. Um it would, this project will also result in the two hundred and about two hundred and twenty. Foot extension of Independence Avenue. As well, um which is a planned road on the, the capital facilities plan. Um the applicant has worked with Public Works um on this road. He's, um they're not gonna be required to begin the road. All the way up to the end of that like tip, um just. Just kind of where these townhomes are. You can kind of see it better in this, in the site rendering on the side. Um so applicant has been working with Public Works for that and utilities will be kind of stubbed at the end of the road. Um here are the elevations on that staff received. And here's that side elevation that um kind of shows a little bit better what the. I mean, this green line, I don't think this is a drive aisle, but it it kind of shows the idea behind. Um the drive aisle in the middle, you'll be driving down a small little decline. Um. Alright, so this is the concept plan with kind of more uh. Context of the area. As you can see, it's right next to I fifteen. Um the applicant. Is planning on doing some sound mitigation strategies on the townhome to help mitigate the sound. Um at the closest point of the closest townhome, which is this corner of this townhome. Um it's about ninety-six feet between there and the edge of the highway. Um and also this north area that's in green, it's not planned to have any. Development, it's not planned to be like professionally landscaped or anything. It's planned to kind of stay as is, but also be better maintained because it is. Um. It's very like unmaintained uh currently. Um and then um this is in your staff reports, but this map is just showing the extension of Independence Avenue. That's planned in the transportation master plan and only really this little yellow section would be completed with this. Um project. Again, applicant has been working with Public Works on that. Um and Independence Avenue is planned to be a three-lane arterial in the future. Um anyways, back to here, the proposed zone map amendment, staff is recommending approval of um this. This, the general plan shows this place, this area as residential, so it meets the general plan map. It also meets general plan goals of increasing housing. It kind of matches with the townhomes just to the south. Um just kind of continues that corridor and it also helps to install a little bit more of a master planned road. Um we think this is a good use for uh previously unused little corner of Provo. Any questions?
I have one. Is the barrier, is there a barrier on the freeway there? I I just wondered cuz a hundred feet is enough for a car to slam into it for sure.
So there is um a a fence right here, also. I don't have a picture from I fifteen, but if you're on the freeway. It kind of, it's kind of back and around the corner of a concrete barrier and then there's a chain link fence, so. And then, and it's kind of up the hill a little.
Okay.
So what I'm, and it's um the northbound, right? So if it was southbound, maybe someone could come and get in there, but with people going that way. And specifically turning away from the property on I fifteen um.
What if you're a north fan?
We don't anticipate somebody in the kitchen.
Heaven forbid, but yes.
My question, um why is there no requirement to landscape that little triangle cuz it's. There.
Cuz it's there. Um so technically. In there. Whatever. Oh. Okay, cool. Technically. No worries. Thank you for doing that. Um technically, they have enough landscaping as is. They they have landscaping the required area and I think with um north, uh the north area, it's just. Mostly that. Um uh wait, yeah, this might be good. The road is going to come like so close, it just doesn't seem worth it to pull out the natural vegetation that's kind of keeping the hillside as it is. Um just to put in nicer vegetation. Um so, yeah. It, um and like the applicant has said, like, it will be nicer. It's just not gonna be like a small little pointy park or something.
Oh yeah, that's right. I I just think like making sure all the invasives are out and it's more like natives would be great, like that, that's all I.
Cuz that makes sense and that's a, that's a great note to look at later.
Yeah.
Um if it's a project continuation, why don't they, why aren't they asking to extend the current Prozone just to the north?
It's, I'm sorry, maybe I should have been clearer. It's actually not a project uh continuation. It's, it's two different owners.
Oh, okay.
Completely, um they just, the property owners for this parcel. Bought the property and know that townhomes were put here and any other use doesn't really make sense, so that's why.
Perfect, thank you.
And style-wise, I I think it kind of matches the townhomes to the south as well, right?
It does, uh-huh. They're technically, um they've got a few more uh design characteristics like. These, I don't even know what to call them, these like bump out like turret-looking things and um I think they have.
Bay window.
Bay window.
Yeah, yeah, bay windows, yeah, you're right.
Did you, did you notice that all six of them have a slightly different configuration? I mean, I know it's not set in stone, but that seems to indicate to me that they're trying not to make it look redundant.
Mm-hmm, boring, yeah.
Alright, any other questions for staff? Alright, any other questions for staff? Sorry, I couldn't hear that. Sure, let's go ahead and look at that.
So, when, cuz I drive this every day, back and from work, you're driving this way, so to see it, you have to kind of look behind you. If that makes sense, but yeah, it kind of goes up and there's that concrete barrier right there, and there's a chain link fence.
And a hill.
Yeah, and um, on the plan, I should have mentioned, they're gonna have like some type of like. Wall thing, it's not gonna be, you know, the big sound barriers or anything, there'll be something.
Have the neighbors up above heard this?
Um, it was, I mean, because of how many people live in this little area, I think like the postcards were like. Seventy to eighty people, so it has been sent out, but I mean, when we posted the sign, that's a ginormous um. Retain wall, so no one's going down there to look, so yeah, I'm not sure, um, if they've. Seen, like, the people right there have seen it, but I will say it did go to the neighborhood meeting and people seem to be just fine with it.
Okay. I think it's a great transition.
Mm-hmm.
To between the freeway and single family anyway, so.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
My next question, um, is there street parking on Independence Avenue there?
Um, could you go, oh, wait, yeah, let me see here, so it's meant to be, this is the utility plan.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's meant to be a three lane, right now, it is a three lane, and I drove up on it to post the signs. And because um, you can kind of see it here, these people down here, um, their driveways are back behind. Um, some of them are part, were parking on the street, you can kind of see.
So there is.
Like dark.
Yeah, there's ample street parking.
Yeah, I imagine most guests will just park on the street, so that's.
I can only see it there.
And there's really only two visitor spots required for that many, for six units?
Yes, it's, it's incremental, um, it's like point zero five or something like that.
And then, do you know what timeline it, there is for that road to go through?
So, great question, it's actually in the phase one, um, section of the transportation master plan, which when I looked at it, I don't know. David's still here, so maybe he will know, um, when I looked at it, it said it was twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four, but maybe David.
It definitely didn't make that timeline.
Yeah, David Dave with Public Works, uh, we're just waiting for funding on that boat, so. At one time, we were gonna do it in five years, and that was ten years ago, so, can I get the idea of?
So soon-ish, maybe.
As soon as we have the money, we'll build it.
So never, just like bus station on eighth.
Uh, yeah, that's a UTA funding, so, but this would be a Provo City funding. Issues.
Great.
When we get through building all the west side, it's booming right now, we may get back to this.
Cool. Thank you. Any last minute questions, we're ready for the applicant. Okay, thank you Nancy. Mary, oh, I don't know why I said Nancy. There's been too many of you tonight, all doing different items, okay, uh, so you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation.
I uh, can promise you I won't take the full fifteen, so Brandon Mills with Georgetown Development. Um, we uh, we're based here in Provo, we've been around for a very long time and uh. And are excited to have uh another idea before you and um. Uh, a lot of this would be redundant to what Mary has already covered, so I'll uh skim over my. This uh, different um slides that I have here. Um, specific things that uh, I wanted to touch on that uh. The questions that you had, there is a pretty significant slope differential from Independence Avenue. Down to the freeway, um, which lends to this type of townhome. Design where um, you have the garage feeding into the back and um. And so with that slope differential, there are some challenges as far as uh constructing. Some practical sound barriers, um, we will end up putting a fence between us and the freeway. Um, but that fence, uh, because the the sound travels, um, you know, basically line of sight. Um, you're, you're not going to be able to. Uh, deflect that sound um very well with a, a fence, um, so we will be doing uh trees and plants. Um, some uh, uh, windows that are um, a little. Uh, better designed to be able to handle the sound, um, but um. Um, they just wanted to touch on the sound part of it, um. Uh, I think everything uh was covered, this iteration of the drawing, um, doesn't capture a few things. That are already in motion, uh, there will be two guest parking stalls that are added, some bike parking. Um, uh, some hammerhead, uh, we have to uh, make some adjustments on the two end units. Uh, to be able to make some hammerhead uh turnarounds there work. Um. Uh, from my notes, I think that's pretty much it, but I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Um, so now that I see the dumpster placement and talking about the hammerheads, is the reason this, the street to access the garages? Is in the middle for the, is it cuz of the dumpster and all that? Cuz I feel like, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but um, but uh, to be able to access. Um, uh, you could put the garage on the street side, um, but that wouldn't be allowed, um, it's.
Yeah, I mean, why is that, the street coming from the street to the garages, why is it in the middle of the? Townhomes?
Sure, um, we had a configuration where we moved the six units together. And had a road going, um, kind of looping through there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I think this is a better design for several reasons. The looped road eats up more um space, um, you have less um green space and you also have um. Two access points on Independence Avenue instead of a single access point. Uh, it, it's not that the city requires anything around that, it's simply that, um. I, I think that's better to only have the single point of access. Plus, you end up with more end units that are, are more uh appealing for homeowners.
Okay. I was just wondering, cuz of, I was, I was thinking of the safety of kids going to their friends' houses and people, you know. They have to walk across this little street, even though it's an interior, like it's an internal parking street, I feel like people still drive insane, so.
I have like just a couple of questions, the lower. Um, access to the, to the garages, is that going to be the same elevation as eighteen eighty?
Uh, I'm not sure where eighteen eighty is.
Eighteen eighty is the street that accesses the garages of the units to the south.
Um, pretty much, um, it, it, there, they. Independence Avenue, um, those townhomes there actually are sunken a little bit, um, and so. I think elevation wise, they're going to be slightly lower than where these are. Um, but, but same general idea. Um.
I'm just looking at the, so, so it looks like there's some overburden off, off of Independence right there where you're building. And then it drops, then it slopes down, and then that slopes down to the, to the lowest drainage area. How much of that overburden is gonna continue to get pushed out, or is that getting all dug out and you're gonna build on that lower level?
Well, um, most of that will stay as filled, um, uh, in the area around the dumpster. Um, in, in that general area, um, but uh, the buildings will eat up a fair amount of, of. Capacity, um, so to speak there, um, there, uh, there has been um some. Uh, dumping of material there over the years that uh we will need to excavate out and um. Uh, likely um, do some structural fill, um, underneath the, the buildings, but uh. But I, I don't see us taking much off the site if any.
Are you worried at all about that giant billboard being a shadow on your house?
Uh, it's kind of in between, um, it, it would be down in the left hand corner. Um, as far as, yeah, in that area, and uh, no, um, I, I don't think it'll pose an issue. Um, maybe to touch on, uh, that we, um, one thing that we've done at Georgetown Development forever. Um, John Bestor, uh, that started the company, um, has prided himself in burying. Uh, uh, the homes, so no two homes alike, and, and this project continues that. Um, uh, we actually built these townhomes, um, uh, this is from Google Maps. Um, yesterday, I, I just went and uh, did street view, this is nine hundred east eleven forty south. Here in Provo, um, uh, same general floor plan and uh elevations that we'll be using.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Nope, okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
We'll now open this item for public comment, although I'm just going to say for the record that there is no one not associated with the city here. So we'll go ahead and close that public comment and bring it back to the commission for uh discussion.
I think this is a great use of a parcel that most people would think was not fit for anything. Have no problems with this, they think it'll sell, I give you my blessing.
Yeah, I think, I mean, near freeway is always difficult, I'm glad they're doing some soundproofing, et cetera. I always would be worried about living near a freeway, but I know there's a bunch of townhomes already right there, and. They seem full, and I see people walking around there all the time, I drove on eight hundred north uh into work and. Seems to work for a lot of people.
It would be nice if, like, I don't know if this is what you were hinting at, Mr. South, but if eighteen eighty west continued into their driveway, so they connected or no?
Well, I was just trying to understand spatially how that all connects, cuz there's not a lot of space that looks like the other units, it's a hundred and fifty feet. From the edge, closest edge of the unit to the edge of the freeway, and I think Mary, you said that the closest edge to yours would be ninety-six feet, is that right? From edge of the structure to edge of freeway?
Something like that.
I didn't uh verifying any of those things, but um, but it is close, um. The uh, the one thing that um, uh, the reason why we wouldn't combine those two is um. They would operate as two separate HOAs, um, independent from each other, so. Independence Avenue, they have a clubhouse, they have certain amenities that uh were included in that project. Those wouldn't be available for, for this.
Plus, I realized as soon as I said it, that it's basically your parking lot, and you don't need to connect parking lots, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was mostly just trying to understand spatially how close everything was. It's gonna be, I'm not too worried about it from a safety perspective, it's just getting close to the freeway for sound and everything else, it's gonna be darn close. But to your point, I think it's a, it's a good use of property that's just sitting there and we need housing and. And other people are having great experiences living right next to it, so.
Did we ask if these are gonna be, these are gonna be rented out?
For sale.
For sale. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Two motions.
Two motions. Take them one at a time.
I'll, I'll read it in, item seven.
Okay.
Okay, um, I move that we, let's see. Approve the concept plan for item seven Georgetown Development requests. Concept plan approval for a six townhome development in a proposed LDR. Zone located at twelve hundred north Independence Avenue and. I guess that's dependent on the. LDR zone change that's coming, but this is just an item seven.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Does this come back to us for project plan approval, or is it too small? It comes back. Okay.
Yep. Okay, we'll go ahead and start the voting with Commissioner South.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. We have a motion for item eight.
Yeah, I'll move for item eight, uh, that the planning commission recommended approval of the zone map amendment. Um. From the MP zone to the LDR zone in order to build the six townhome development at twelve hundred north Independence.
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start voting, Commissioner South.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. Great, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, second?
I'll second.
And everybody in favor?
Aye.